This conference will now be recorded.
Testing one, two, those online, can you put in the chat if you can hear me?
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, March 16th, 2022 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. And the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session this evening prior to this meeting for legal and personnel matters. Randy, if you would please review the public virtual meeting rules for us?
Sure. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of tonight's agenda. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please keep your microphones or telephones on mute to avoid any interference. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring the go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will then have the opportunity to comment and ask your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. We'll move on to Agenda Item Four, which is courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone in the public who has any comment at this time for any non-agenda items? Good evening. If you could just give your name and address in the microphone, please? Can you turn the microphone on?
Vinnie Quinn, 1407 North 21st Street, Allen Town. I just wanted to bring something up we've been working at, at Greenawaltz Fire Company. Last year, I came up with an idea that I wanted to give back to the community. We get a lot of support during all the functions we run. So Greenawaltz has hooked up with Parkland High School through Allison McPeak. She was helping us. And we're going to present Parkland High School with two $1,000 scholarship awards to be given to students in the emergency service fields. That's if they want to be fire, medic, police. And there's an application in the high school. If you go up on the website and go under scholarships, it's posted. May 3rd, they have to have the applications in. They'll present them to us and then we'll pick two students to present those scholarships to. We're going to try to do one male and one female if possible. If not, it could be two males or two females depending on who puts in for the scholarships. So I just wanted to let the Board and that know that Greenawaltz is going to do that and we'll keep on doing it as long as we can. We have no time limit of when it would end or anything like that. That's what I wanted to let know.
Well, thank you very much, Vinnie. That's really fantastic to hear and I think it's wonderful that you're going to do that. It'll encourage hopefully more of our young people to be interested in emergency services. So thank you to you and all the members of Greenawaltz for coming up with this idea. I think it's fantastic. Thank you. Any other comments from the public at this time? Okay. We'll move on then to Agenda Item Five. It's approval of our Board of Commissioners meetings. We have two sets to approve this evening. The first is from the February 16th, 2022 Commissioners Meeting. Are there any comments or questions on those minutes? Hearing none. I need a motion to proceed with those minutes?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor to approve the meeting minutes for February 16th, 2022, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the second set of minutes for March 2nd, 22 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Are there any comments or questions on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none. I need a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no ordinances tonight. We do have a couple of resolutions to go through. The first one is a resolution extending the conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton. I believe Dave Manhart from Community Development is going to present on this topic.
Yes, so I will give the introduction and then hand it over for any questions to the applicant. This is for a extension of the conditional final approval for Hotel Hamilton. The application is at the old King George Inn site. It's for a bank, a hotel, and I believe a pharmacy on the five, roughly five and a half acre tract. It's owned highway commercial. It received its first preliminary plan approval back in 2016. It's been here a couple of times for extensions and there were quite a few complications with stormwater and PennDOT. That's really what took the bulk of the time, but I'll let the applicant elaborate on that.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
I'm Bud Newton from Newton Engineering. I live at 4025 Dahlwood Drive in South Whitehall Township. I can now say that.
You're welcome. Welcome to the township.
When we're here last in front of this board, I didn't think we'd have to be here again to ask for another extension for this project. In December, we pretty much had final approval from PennDOT of the concept of what we were going to be doing with the drainage on site. For those of you who weren't involved with the project, one of the biggest problems we had there was a flooding that occurs at the intersection of Cedar Crest Boulevard and Hamilton Boulevard. And, you know, I'm well familiar with that. In fact, even back by PennDOT days, we studied that location. And when the Dorneyville bypass was under construction, PennDOT was going to improve the culvert underneath the roadway, but they couldn't do it at the time because the village of Dorneyville was determined to be a historic village. Now, what has been happening with this project is Mr. Patel has agreed to improve the drainage through his property. And we already have a commitment from PennDOT, the township has a commitment from PennDOT, that once he provides downstream drainage easement in the conveyance system, they will put on their program to eventually replace the culvert underneath Cedar Crest Boulevard, which is substantially undersized right now. So that should, in the long term, will handle the drainage problems in the area. What has happened with the project, and as I said, I didn't think we'd have to be back in front of you yet, you know, with PennDOT agreed to what we're doing with the drainage sometime in early December. We had a meeting with the township staff on December 14th that went through all the items that were still remaining on the project. We submitted revised preliminary final plans. We submitted descriptions for the easements, all those things. We got a response letter from Tony on January 20th and from your geotechnical consultant on 216, there was February 16th. There were some minor comments in there that still needed to be resolved, but we didn't get any final comments from PennDOT until March 8th. And there were no longer any drainage comments in the letter, but we believe it was the first time that they looked at the improvements that they wanted at the traffic signal at Hamilton Boulevard and Cedar Crest Boulevard. So we do have those comments to get addressed. And, you know, we wanted to get those addressed before we came back and finished the comments that we had with Pittcock. Also, in addition to that, in the meantime, Sarah Hogan from Joe Plunkett's office, Attorney Hogan, was working with Paul North on the historic preservation easement. Following that December 14th meeting, we had another inspection of the King George Inn that was done by Buck Ridge Engineering on behalf of the township. There were some minor items that he found that he wanted, you know, that he thought could structurally affect the King George Inn. Those have since been taken care of. So, you know, I think everyone's happy that, one, all those nonhistoric portions of the King George Inn have been removed and the building is structurally sound. What remains there of it. So at this point in time, we just have to clean up these comments with PennDOT and then finalize the recording of the plans and get all the agreements and everything in place with the township. So that's why we need the extension of time. I'm sorry that I had to be back in front of you again. Like I said, I thought we would have this wrapped up by now, but a lot of complications on this project. It became a lot more complicated than we thought it was going to be in 2016 when we started it.
Well, thank you for your presentation this evening. I had one question I wanted to start with. I know when you were before the board in September on the first, when we gave that last extension, a comment was made by the board at the end to please keep the board and the staff informed on two-month intervals. And I know that we hadn't had any updates as a board from you. And you identified that you met with staff in December. Have you been keeping up with staff in the interim so that they're aware of what progress you're making?
I believe we have. I don't know if Randy or Tony want to address that, but we, you know, they've been seeing all the correspondence back and forth and know that what we've been doing in the meantime.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from any of the board members? None. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Nothing in the chat, Dave? Okay. At this point, we have a resolution before us to extend the conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton. Do I have a motion to proceed with this resolution?
So moved. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Oh, I don't have to come back?
Thank you. We hope to see you back.
Thank you for this project. I'll come back. Thank you.
We hope to see you for a grand opening soon. Thank you. Moving on to our next resolution. We have a resolution before us extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Parkland Manor Phase Four Senior Living. Dave Manhart, if you would help us with this.
Yes. Again, I'll give a brief introduction. This project is located at 4636 Cracker Sport Road. It's the old Racket Center. There is a 64 one-bedroom unit senior living building with 16 studio apartments proposed at that location. The original approval was in 2020, I believe. And staff has no objections to the extension and the applicant can give an update of where they are in the process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I guess I'll be the first one to see you and say I'm not a resident of the township, although I was for 13 years. No, seriously. Bill Urbman with Keystone Consulting Engineers. I live at 5533 Heather Lane in Upper McCunchy Township, here to request the board approval of this resolution extending the recording time for three more months for this project. Although it would appear there's a number of open issues, I think seven out of 16 or so have been addressed. If you look at them closely, you realize they're very, very simple. Two or three of them involve writing checks. There's two that relate to the fact that there's condominiums on the property, which creates some challenges legally that the solicitor is working with, the attorney for the developer to work through those. The one that's been rather frustrating, quite frankly, is a planning module. There's a reduction in actual sewage flow in this and we're trying to get concurrence from DEP that it's acceptable that we do not have to do a planning module. I think I just found some information today that that could be cleaned up the next day or two. So I don't think we're going to need the whole three months, but we just want to make sure we have enough time. We're very, very close to wrapping up those issues, which are all administrative. There's no design issues. We worked through all those quite some time ago. So we're cautiously optimistic. We'll move pretty quickly on this and maybe record it in the next month or two.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution?
I just have a quick question. I know you're saying three months. I mean, is that going to be adequate? I know you feel it will be.
The three months should be adequate, yeah. I can be honest with you. We were probably very, very close to reaching it by the end of this month, but Greg correctly said you might want to get the extension just in case, but we're fairly confident we can move quickly. Thanks for asking.
Any other comments or questions? Any from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I need a motion then to proceed with a resolution to extend the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Parkland Manor Phase Four Senior Living.
Make a motion. I'm second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. Good luck with it. Moving on to Item C. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township authorizing the execution of a trail easement agreement with Parkland Area School District, providing for the granting of a perpetual trail easement over lands of Parkland Area School District. Mike Kukets.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So as you know, we're continuing to design, permit, and construct sections of the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail through South Whitehall Township. At last evening's school board meeting, I believe it was approved, and now we are seeking permission to enter into the easement agreement with the Parkland Area School District for the development of the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail through their property. The easement would allow for 10-foot wide paved trail. In exchange for the easement, the Parkland Area School District has requested total compensation of $1.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this resolution from the board?
Mike, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Bless you. I'm looking at the picture and I was just wondering if you have another picture showing where this meets? Because I see it going on Cedar Crest on Ritter. How will the trail continue? Where will it continue? Are you able to give us some background?
As far as crossing Cedar Crest Boulevard?
No, where it comes by Ritter Road.
Sure, yeah.
And then it meets the little, where does it go after Ritter Road?
That goes on to the Jaris Corporation, which we've already secured an easement on the land owned by the Jaris Corporation. That's what you see, kind of that light yellow line almost going on the lower left-hand side. I mean, it won't be in the tree line. It's up a little farther. And I do have those maps from when those easements were secured, but it'll cross through the Jaris Corporation easement that we got and then through the Brininger family easement connecting to Lap Road.
Commissioner Hodges, it actually, from where you can see this on the map here, it follows the Jordan Creek all the way down to Cover Bridge Park at Lap Road. So it runs parallel to the easements that have been secured with the Jaris family.
So is this the easement that will continue to River Road?
This is the easement taking us up Ritter Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard.
I know, but I'm asking where it joins. And at the lower left-hand on the picture, where does it, where does it join? Is this where we have the River Road sharing?
No.
This is not?
I mean, it's the same trail, yes, but this section, this easement is not.
Yeah, I get that, but I want to know where it joins. Will that join and continue anywhere on River Road?
No. If I understood your question correctly, the answer would be no. This trail easement will not touch River Road. It's going to cross Ritter Road to get onto the easement at the Jaris Corporation.
This piece connects to this piece. Will this piece ever?
I think she's asking for the overall connection back to.
Yes, the whole length of the trail as it's designed and permitted now. There will be a share row on River Road. Correct.
Do you have any pictures of that or no?
Not this evening, no. That's a different phase, different section of the project altogether.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? I just had one question. Obviously, it's going to go along River Road, Ritter Road, and then Cedar Crest. And Cedar Crest is a heavily traveled road. How, what is the design plan? How close will it go to the road? Because are we planning for, if there's any future widening of Cedar Crest Boulevard? And how will we assure the safety of people walking along this trail since it will be so close to a major road?
Sure. I mean, the easement itself, I don't have it memorized, but I believe it was 50 feet wide. So it gives us ample room to stay off of Cedar Crest Boulevard. And as far as next steps, you know, regarding Cedar Crest, obviously, that is a very heavily traveled road. It'll be probably the most traveled road that this trail gets near. When we get to that phase, as far as continuing this trail, that'll be addressed at a later stage, a later phase.
Thank you. And I know this isn't, I have just a general question. This trail is also going to connect to the Trexler Preserve, the nature preserve. And we haven't had any matters before us for that. So is that, is that a section that we're going to see in the future as well?
Yeah, I'm hopeful. I mean, that would obviously be on North Whitehall Township to take under their wing and take this trail all the way up to the Trexler Nature Preserve. They're well aware of this project. I know they want to see it through, just as all the other partners do. Again, it's for municipalities and the county and some private funders in the Trexler Trust and others that have come up with the design, the initial, you know, 10,000-foot view design of this project and want to see it through completion. So there's a lot of, a lot of folks aware of this. North Whitehall Township is definitely aware of it. And I'm honestly not sure where they are in their next steps, but I know that they, you know, want to connect with us and get the trail up to Trexler Gains.
Excellent. Thank you. There are no other questions from the board? Is there any questions or comments from the public? Anything in the chat? Looks like there's one.
Robert Hodges, 1707 Penns Crossing. You should be able to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I just turned you out.
Okay. All right, thank you. I assume that if this is created, this will become a paved pathway? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Has there been a cost, a study determining how much it will cost to pave this pathway?
No, that's next steps. Once we get the easements, then we can look into the design and engineering and cost estimates for the project.
Okay, so this is just gaining permission to use this area if we choose to, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I would need a motion to proceed with the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township authorizing the execution of a trail easement agreement with Parkland Area School District, providing for the granting of a perpetual trail easement over lands of Parkland Area School District. Do I hear said motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to Item D. We have a resolution approving a 2022 DCNR grant application for Cover Bridge Park Improvement Projects. That'll be you again, Mike.
That would be, yep. So this was a continuation from the Board of Commissioners workshop meeting last week, which we discussed this project at length. So Phase C, again, will create a new pavilion amphitheater on the east side of the park, providing shade and other amenities to our residents. And will also repurpose a grass field into a functional multi-use athletic field for youth groups and others. It will also allow for some other minor amenities, improvements, landscaping, and sorts of items. DCNR requires a 50% match. Staff is respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the DCNR grant resolution attached, allowing staff to start the fundraising process to complete Phase C of the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? I do have one. I went back. Thank you for presenting that, Mike. And we did have a workshop about this recently. And I did go back and look at the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan and I guess I was surprised to see that part of the plan assumed demolition of Ware's Dam. So there's been obviously some changes to the, the plan itself. And I expressed this during the workshop and I'll say it again here this evening. We are having our second meeting tomorrow as a township to upgrade our parks, rec, and open space plans. And I feel it would be important to survey our residents before we move forward with doing further upgrades of Cover Bridge Park. I appreciate the work you've done and that we've got a grant in front of us, but without having a full picture of what our needs are for the community to provide for the recreation, I feel like this is a little bit piecemeal in that our plan that we did with North Whitehall, you know, we've kind of picked and chosen different aspects of it. I just would like to see us regroup and get a path forward for five- and 10-year look before we proceed with more building in the park. That's my only comment. Ms. Hodges, yes?
Thank you, President Kelly. I have to agree with you. Mike, I love what you've been doing with the park and I know you've put a lot of hard work and time into this. I appreciate that and I appreciate you. I want you to know that. But I would also like to have the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan revisited. We're growing. We're developing. We can change our vision. We can adapt. And I would like to see, just as we are adapting our, not adapting, changing our comp plan and revisiting that, I would also like to see the master plan revisited. Also, the comments, I remember asking you at the workshop when the survey was taken, and the comments you said were from 2014. And a lot has happened since then. So there's a lot I'd like addressed, you know. There's flooding. We've had more severe weather. I'd like that looked at on a regional level because I think just looking at a little piece of it, you're not looking at the whole thing. You're putting a Band-Aid on it. And we have flooding coming from way up north. So I would love if the Leha Valley Planning Commission could get on it and, you know, take a look at the entire picture from a regional level and address the flooding from a regional level rather than us putting more and more money into it at this point. That's just my feeling. I appreciate it, though I appreciate everything you're doing. And this is nothing new because I said it at the workshop, too. So thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
I just have a question, Mike, if I may. If we go forward with this and you apply and we get the grant, I know you made a comment it won't be till maybe November.
Correct.
You say October, November, you would find out. And as we progress from now until then, until we know and proceed with the master plan and another survey, not 10 years old or eight years old, and we see the direction the township residents are looking to go, and we take that into consideration, if we're awarded the grant, can we then decline it?
I would say it's not a good practice to get into. Typically, when you accept a grant, when you apply for a grant, you provide the resolution saying, yes, we will support this project. I would advise us to not go that route unless we were looking.
But it would be very specific for this.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Any comments from?
I have a comment. We discussed this in the workshop. We talked about this for an hour. You originally presented a scope of work for, I think, $250,000. We had a discussion and we reduced it to a reasonable $100,000. And the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but half of that money is available. So I think your proposal tonight is for a possible $50,000 expenditure. Is that correct?
That is correct, as long as everything goes forward as it should.
Yeah.
We don't have a contract with the potential contractor who would construct the pavilion, but we do have a letter from him stating what he's willing to do at this point.
All right. So I'll try my best to state my final comment from the workshop. I appreciate Commissioner Kelly's point of view that we need to have the long-term plan to understand where all these individual projects fit in. I said last week, and I'll say again, I've asked for that for like two years. I really want to see the master plan. Regarding the flood risk, I appreciate Commissioner Hodges' viewpoint about the flood risk. That's an overall issue that we need to address. And then my conclusion was, if we're talking about a $50,000 expenditure, I would agree with that level of expenditure despite the other concerns from the other two commissioners.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Okay. Seeing and hearing, all comments have been answered. We have a resolution before us approving a 2022 DCNR grant application for Covered Bridge Park Improvements Project. Is there a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, three to two.
Mike, I'd just like to make a comment, though.
Yes.
I would like to see, as Diane suggested, a new survey go out. But please, to the, to the residents as soon as possible, an idea?
Sure.
Let's try to accelerate the master plan for Covered Bridge.
Sure. Just for clarification, would you like that included in the prop plan that we're doing this year for the department as a whole? Or were you looking for a specific survey to go out regarding this, this improvement?
I'd like to see it sooner than now. In my opinion.
As a township as a whole, for our recreation needs for the township?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, if I can just comment on that. See, I, I do know that our prop plan will have a lot of public input. We'll be sending surveys out. We'll have public meetings in this room. So just for clarification, I apologize. You want an additional survey to go out sooner, sooner rather than later. Our first public meeting is next month. And then from there, we'll start to work to do the mailings and other things in the subsequent months after that.
I think that's.
I wouldn't want to confuse our residents and send them one survey, and then three months later, they get another survey about parks and recreation.
It'll be that soon.
Very good.
Thanks.
Moving on to agenda item E, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution and delivery of an intermunicipal mutual aid cooperation agreement with Whitehall Township. And Lieutenant Steve Brown, please help us with this.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. This evening, the police department is seeking the approval of a resolution for the execution of a mutual aid agreement between South Whitehall Township and Whitehall Township Police Department. Very similar to the mutual aid agreement that we have currently with Upper Mac, the Upper Mac Police Department, that we adopted back in 2015. These agreements are essential to keep operations afloat, especially during critical incidents, or other natural disasters, or something where our manpower, our resources are stretched thin, we can just reach out to another jurisdiction. They can come in and assist.
Very good. Thank you, Lieutenant Brown. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Any from the public? A hearing and seeing none. I would need a motion to proceed with a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution and delivery of an intermunicipal mutual aid police cooperation agreement with Whitehall Township. Do I hear said motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lieutenant Brown.
Thank you.
We will move on to motion section of our agenda. Motion A, we have a motion requesting permission to award the bid with regard to park restroom staining project. Mike Kukets, if you'd assist us with that.
Absolutely. As you know, we constructed a new restroom in Covered Bridge Park last year. That's a new permanent structure. It's made out of cedar. It needed a little time to kind of settle. It has settled. And now we are looking to stain the restroom inside and out to prolong the life of this facility and keep it in good working order for the residents. Township received four bids to complete the restroom staining. We're respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners award the contract to Frankie's Painting Service, LLC, in the amount of $4,520.
You, Mike? Excuse me. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this motion? None. I just had one question, Mike. The, the bids kind of went both ways. Some of them were for latex paint, others were for oil paint. I know that that is a wood cedar structure and is in a park where we do, unfortunately, at times deal with some flooding. And, and it's pretty wet down there at times. Is the bid that you selected, they didn't signify in their written proposal specifically how they would take care of that wood? Did you speak with maybe the manufacturer of that restroom?
Take care of it as in the type of product?
To know what they were going to use to seal it. There were two different bids. Some of them were using oil-based and some were using latex. And this particular bid, the first bid, didn't really specify. It just says stain all wood.
It says paint quoted is PPG Pro Lux, as you'll see. It's the same exact paint that was on the Sabrinsky quote and the Casey painting quote. It's kind of the, the top-tier oil-based stain for wooden structures, wooden homes, that sort of thing.
And do you have any idea how often we would need to redo?
I believe it'll be five to 10 years till it'll need a touch up.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right.
If there are no other questions from the board, are there any questions or comments from the public? A hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to proceed with request for permission to award a bid with regard to park restroom staining project?
So moved.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion B, we have a motion to award Jordan Creek Greenway Design and Engineering Services Supplement Number Two, Phase One, Ware Mill Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard, and Phase Two, Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard. And Mike Kukets?
Yes.
So staff is seeking permission to complete the design work needed for Jordan Creek Greenway Trail. The RFP was completed for engineered plans and required permits for a trail project along the Jordan Creek Greenway from Ware Mill Road all the way to Cedar Crest Boulevard at the July 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting, at which point in time Phase One was, was approved. We could not award Phase Two at that time because we needed the necessary land easement secured before we could officially award Phase Two. Earlier this evening, we can now say all three land easements needed have been approved. So I want to thank you for that. So this would simply be awarding Phase Two to that original RFP, and completing everything needed from Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard. Also included in this will be the ECMS PENDOT specifications needed if we are awarded with the TASSA grant for construction of Phase One.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this motion?
Oh, yeah, Mike, have we received other quotes on, other than Michael Baker for the 100 and?
Yes, this went out to bid in, in 2020. And we received multiple quotes. I don't recall off the top of my head just how many, but there was a number, a good number of responses.
And Michael Baker came in the lowest bidder?
Correct.
Thanks.
All right.
Are there any other questions?
You know what? I have a comment, please. I'm, I'm struggling with this at Covered Bridge. And I'll tell you why. The whole shared road really bothers me from a public safety standpoint. So I understand you want to do the easement. And I'm all for connecting the Parkland High School and keeping a connection with the high school and working with the students there. I think that's really valuable. I think it's wonderful. I have a problem with that road sharing on River Road. It's a really narrow road. Even when just driving, you just hope and pray that there's no one coming towards you because it's so narrow. And I've been driving on this road for, I mean, I've been a resident for how many years. But lately, especially since the nice weather has, has been around, I've been driving on it more and more. And just a few days ago, I was driving and there was a family and two small children on their bikes. I think they had training wheels and they were all over the road. And I had to actually go into the oncoming traffic lane to avoid them and to keep them safe. And I don't know, I just, I, I can't see the rush with going through some of these things. I don't know what the hurry is. I think we should be very thoughtful with our master plan for the park. I think we should really take a look at public safety, look at that road, look at what our options are. I don't agree at all with that shared road. And I'm struggling with it. And I, I just have to be honest with you.
Sure. No, I, I completely understand.
I would, I would love, actually, I'm sorry, I would love to see some type of loop. When people come to the park, they could make a loop and walk around. And I would, I love the idea of, of the greenway and the trail, but not on that road. I'm really having a hard time with this.
Sure. Completely understand. I mean, public safety is extremely important. It's, it's something that we all care about, obviously. I will say, as far as the share road goes with trails, it is a very common practice. It's used a lot in urban areas on busy streets as well, where you see the white line and the bicycle symbol or, or walking symbol on much, much busier roads than River Road is. The, the issue that I'm seeing down there is that we don't have the measures in place right now for adequate walking on River Road, but yet people are walking it to make that loop. They're going through the bridge, they're going down River Road, down to the footbridge. So right now, we don't have the measures in place that the engineer plans. And, and just to back up this, the motion in front of you here doesn't relate exactly to the share road portion. Again, that's a different section of, of trail. This is a completely different matter. But again, I completely understand what you're saying. It was none of our first choices to say, hey, yes, let's get up on the road for that 100 feet. And actually, we, we would love to have a long-term vision to make improvements to the creek and, and actually have enough room on the side of the road where we could potentially, you know, eat folks off the road. The number of permits, Army Corps Engineer, other things that would go into that, I mean, we're, we're talking years and years and years and years of people just walking on River Road as they do now then. I know Randy said this in the Commissioners Workshop last month, but we will definitely speak with them about what safety measures, you know, additional safety measures can we maybe put into place there. I mean, since the beginning, we've discussed everything from speed bumps to one-way to lines to signage to, you know, all, all sorts of things. So there are things we can look at to make this as safe as possible.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Are there any other comments from the board? I'll just make a comment. I, I spoke about this when this segment was before the board a couple of years ago, and I'm, I'll reiterate, and it'll be similar to what Commissioner Hodges just stated. I am, am not, I did not vote to approve this then for that same reason, that the shared road concept, to create a situation where it's not 100, you know, assuring as much safety as we possibly can. Sharing that with a, a road with an automobile and children is, is never a good combination. And I looked back through the Covered Bridge master plan, and there was a phase in there for the bridge to cross the creek, which would have been a much safer option. I don't know when that got taken out. I know it had to do with cost. We've got 165 acres in that park. And I would think that we could find a way to loop the trail in, interior somehow, to avoid this altogether. And I did share that in the workshop, and, and I still feel that way today. I don't feel like the township should proceed with a section where we know there will be potential sharing with automobiles and vehicles when there's small children or people with disabilities walking that path. So I just want to make that comment. But I do thank you for the work that you're done, you have done. The segment of the greenway that's done is beautiful, and I know a lot of people enjoy it. It's a nice, safe walkway. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public?
I have a comment.
Oh, sure.
So we've talked about this over an extended period of time, right? The recent workshops and now here tonight. You may have already said this, but Commissioners Kelly and Hodges are asking for solutions. We haven't talked about any potential solutions. So what are the potential solutions to the safety issue that they're concerned about? And I'm thinking, I'm, I'm not thinking operational safety like flagman and stuff like that. I'm talking about redesign like, like they're suggesting.
Sure. I mean, that, that would be, I guess, the one and only solution would be to redesign, you know, to come up with, with the funds for the soft cost, to redesign the trail, to go over the creek, and then go back to DEP for the permitting process, as discussed in the workshop meeting. We, we want to know ahead of time, or just keep in the back of our minds, that that initial bridge, pedestrian footbridge, was quoted at over $800,000, and that was many years ago. So that would probably more than double the price of constructing the trail through the park if we did go that route.
I guess what comes to mind when we talk about that, it seems like an awful lot of money. But to work on Cola Ridge, the estimate of the cost is around $5 million. To me, we're doing a project. We're going to create a pathway, a walkway, a greenway for generations to come. And to do it in as safe way as we possibly can, if that would entail looking for a grant to help put a bridge over the creek, I would be all for that. I think we, we sit here and approve an awful lot of money for parks programs and their wonderful recreational facilities that we provide for the public. And it's our responsibility to make sure it's done safely. And to Commissioner Walke's point, I'm all for a redesign of this because I don't believe it's in the best interest of the township or our residents or our visitors to our township to have to find safety workarounds because we're sharing a road when we have 165 acres of park to work within. I just, I know I wasn't here at the beginning of this greenway project, but I'm here today, and this is how I feel about it from my standpoint as a commissioner in this, at, at this juncture with where we are with this particular greenway. So.
So I have another question. I don't think this is the type of thing that comes under the planning commission's purview, is it?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Let me ask that, the, aside from Commissioner Kelly, the two other planning commission members who are present, Bill McNair and Brian Height, are you familiar with this situation? Are you familiar with the safety issue?
We need to speak into the mics if we're gonna.
Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. Through my employer, I'm aware of everything that goes on with the greenway from the city of Allentown to the nature preserve and all the issues that are being attacked by various municipalities, including North Whitehall, how they're going to cross Kernville Road. I was on a tech assist for the local technical assistance program to advise them. And that's something that's potentially available to South Whitehall Township through the PENDOT LTAP program where they can come out. They've done it previously for various sites in this township. So that is a potential. Pat Wright from LTAP has been to 67 counties in this state addressing these kinds of issues. He's the safety guru of this kind of pedestrian active transportation stuff. So that would be an option to give another set of eyes. Sometimes a new set of eyes is good. And he can share experiences of other municipalities that, like your staff has said, this is not an uncommon situation, but there are ways to mitigate or potentially do something in the interim before other funding becomes available. With a new infrastructure bill, there is more funding available. Nobody knows how it's going to be awarded, not even the federal government who passed the law. So until we get to that stage, there's a lot of interim stuff being proposed. The TASSA grants is an option. I know they have an application. I can't speak about that. And the new infrastructure bill has basically doubled those amounts coming in the future. That's available locally in Lehigh and Northampton Counties. So there are options that this new infrastructure bill will provide in the future. But in the interim and in the current, there is LTAP tech assists available that they might want to pursue. And that's free of charge. The PENDOT does that free, just to give free advice. They, they see the value. That money comes down from the federal government to run that program. PENDOT sees the value in that program to provide it free. All it costs is your time. And at the end, they'd rather you get the advice free and then implement that with the funds later. So I'm very aware.
Does that have to be a state road, or does that?
That's my question.
They can be anywhere. Trails, any, anything to do with transportation, which includes pedestrian connectivity, active transportation, they, they'll come out and, and do that. We did a tech assist a couple of years ago when George Kenny was here on Dillon Drive, right near the clubhouse, because the road's so. right near the clubhouse, because the road's so 40 feet wide, and there was recommendations of how to control speeding, which is primarily the neighborhood speeding, because it's not a cut-through. It's residents actually speeding on their own road. But that's a whole nother conversation we can have later, offline.
So, hang with us for a minute.
Okay.
Can I ask Mike a question, then come back to you, Brian? Brian just gave a description of an option, which obviously will take an extended period of time. What timeframe are you on?
To be 100% honest with the board here, I mean, we are kind of at the 11th hour, I'll say, with that. So, we have gone through the design and permitting. Well, initially, we got the DCNR grant for the design and permitting. Michael Baker, who's a very reputable, well-known firm, has looked at every option to cross the bridge or to create a pedestrian bridge there, when a few years earlier, we did not create a pedestrian bridge because of the price, wasn't looked at as the most favorable option. And then beyond that, once we get down to the east end of the park, we're going to have to cross the bridge or cross the water yet again and build a second bridge to get back up to the Brininger family side of things, and Jaris Corporation School District to Cedar Crest Boulevard. So, it adds a lot of cost. And again, if this was two years ago or so, I wouldn't see it as much of a potential issue. As Brian had mentioned, you know, we have a TASSA grant in right now to potentially pay for the entirety of the construction of the trail through the park with no tax dollars being used for that if awarded. So, we just have a lot of moving parts right now that if we were to back out, it would send up some yellow flags and red flags and some other area.
I think there's a few things we can do here. Brian, thanks for bringing up Pat Wright's name. Tremendous individual. I've worked with him before, and he definitely is an expertise in this field. So, what I think we can do is have Pat, you know, if we can help us get set up with him, take a look at the existing plans along River Road right there to see if he has any safety concerns with the current layout and the signage that's proposed in the plan, and to offer suggestions. I think that's an easy solution. But I think what we have in front of us here tonight is primarily for Phase 2, which is the easement areas that we've been discussing, the Brininger family, the Jaris family, and Parkland High School as well. So, I don't want to get sidetracked too much on that. I love the recommendation. Pat's certainly a well-known individual with these safety precautions, especially with trails and pedestrians in general. So, I certainly think we should take you up on that recommendation and, you know, look into this, have him review the plans, maybe come out to River Road, do a site visit, and to see if there's anything he would do differently with those plans.
I think the idea, Brian, that you said another set of eyes would be great. I'd like to make a motion. We table this for this evening.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to table the motion. Are there any other comments?
Yes, I... No, go ahead.
I would like to visit the site and with at least one other commissioner who has cited the safety concern, and Randy, Mike, whoever else, I would like to see the site and see an explanation of the safety concern. It's hard to visualize in this meeting room.
Sure. Again, for clarification, what's in front of the board this evening has absolutely nothing to do with the share road. What's in front of the board this evening has to do with starting the design work needed for the Brininger family property easement, the Jaris Corporation property easement, and the school district easement. This has absolutely nothing to do with what was just discussed the past 20 to 30 minutes.
Mike, could you, under action requested in the memo, it says Phase 1 and 2, Waremill Road to Cedar Crest. So, that includes this section of...
Correct. So, if you look at the budget page, why Phase 1 and why it says Waremill is because if awarded the TASSA grant, there are extra funds that are going to be needed to bring the specs up, the signage up, and the ECMS inputs and everything. So, there is roughly just over $24,000 in this budget that if we are not awarded the TASSA grant, we will not need. And then this would simply say Phase 2, Brininger family to the school district, if that makes sense to you. There are some preliminary Phase 1 funding. There is some preliminary Phase 1 funding included in there, Phase 2 scope, that resorts back to Phase 1.
Help me out a minute.
Sure.
I understand what you're saying about what we're looking at tonight.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to talk about the part at River Road. That's not... But are we going to have a, basically, a project that's right after River Road then? What about River Road and back? You're saying you're going to start where on this project?
For this, for design and construction, would be from Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard.
Okay, okay. I know where that is. I mean, so what about Lap Road back to Waremill, where the dam?
Correct. That's already been designed. That's what was that discussion that we just had. That's already been designed, awarded...
And that's the River Road.
Gone through the permitting process with DEP, is a part of the TASSA grant. That's all behind us, yeah. This is for awarding to start the design and permitting from Lap Road...
Lap to Cedar Crest, which is what we approved tonight with the easement.
Correct.
Okay.
This goes directly with the easement. We were waiting for the third easement with the school district. We've already obtained the one from the Jaris Corporation land and the Brininger family land. That's what this motion is for.
So, just to clarify, the actual wording of the motion talks about Phase 1, Waremill Road to Cedar Crest, and Phase 2, Lap to Cedar Crest. So, they're both included in the motion before us tonight.
That's what I saw.
The Phase 1 part of this is to secure the funds needed, to budget the funds needed if we were awarded the TASSA grant and wanted to move forward with constructing Phase 1 of this Jordan Creek Greenway through the park.
Which would be the River Road part that we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
So... Sorry, go ahead.
So, it is tied to it in that sense?
Correct.
Okay.
And maybe I could make a suggestion to the board that perhaps if we took out the ECMS, the Phase 1 funding portion of this budget, the $24,061, if we were able to take that off the budgeted amount here and award the Phase 2 portion of this, so Michael Baker can get started on design and permitting for that. We have had the grant at the end of this year. It'll be three years. So, we will most likely need to request a DCNR extension. I'll guarantee that we will need a DCNR extension if we don't award this this evening to allow Michael Baker to start to look from Lap Road to the school district, the design and permitting of the Jordan Creek Greenway.
So, President Kelly, actually, that was going to be one of the questions that I had. Is there a way to modify this motion this evening to address the concerns that the board has expressed, and there's another set of eyes that we can engage, and yet go forward with the unobjectional part? We might need the solicitor's input on the wording of that, if that's acceptable. But probably, I ask that one more question. You said that we're in the 11th hour. So, the 11th hour of what part of this motion are we in?
We're in the 11th hour of...
The easement part?
Re-looking at Phase 1 of this project. That's something that's been in the works for years. It's been designed, permitted, it's gone to DEP, it was with them for nearly nine months or so. We got the permits back. We've submitted a TASSA grant. That's the portion, that's the design section that includes the road that's been discussed.
Okay. So, the 11th hour means what's the deadline in your eyes, approximately, or...
Deadline, I'm sorry.
When does the clock strike midnight? And the reason I'm asking that is so that I can get a gauge on whether the, our township manager said that this individual would be a good one to contact, is when would we have to have input from this individual to even have additional comment on the part that we may strike tonight?
Sure. Well, Mr. Height will most likely be getting a phone call from me tomorrow, if that's okay with him, and we'll work to get that individual out here as quickly as possible. I do believe the TASSA grants are awarded in April, if I'm not mistaken, which is right around the corner.
Okay.
So, if we are awarded the TASSA grant to construct the trail through the park, at that point, we would come back to the board looking for the funds that we, it sounds like we may be removing this evening to allow Michael Baker to start the bid process through ECMS and start the actual construction through the park. At that point, it sounds like we may want to wait until we hear what this individual has to say regarding the plans and getting that second set of eyes on it.
And from someone who's driving the program and the township manager, are you okay with that?
Yes, as long as we can potentially work with the TASSA grant to make some minor adjustments to the area of concern. And again, I think it's going to be, you know, safety measures, taking a look at the plan, making sure the small section of River Road that we would be sharing is obviously in the safest possible manner. So, I think Pat Wright, looking at the plan, said doing a site visit. If you'd all like to come out, we can certainly show you the area. That's not an issue. And again, having a second set of eyes on it, reviewing the plans and offering suggestions should help, hopefully, put things at ease.
So, procedurally, I may vote against the motion to table only to, so that we could resurrect something that we may be more, you know, amenable to this evening.
Yeah, I would withdraw that motion to table if we end up coming up with a different conclusion with the solicitor's approval.
Right.
Yeah, I would withdraw that.
I withdraw the second.
Yeah.
If I may.
You started this whole thing.
But I invited him. So, I'm all over, I've been in 62 municipalities in Lehigh-Northampton County. I've worked with his brother all the time, so Brian Cope. TASSA grant applications can be adjusted. We adjusted one for the City of Allentown and Martin Luther Community, Jr., so that's not an issue. Pat Wright will be getting texts from me after this meeting. I have his personal phone. I probably shouldn't have said that, but anyway. But I would also encourage you to get design and engineering rolling. The pandemic has enlightened a lot of municipalities that people want to be active, and the more you have ready to go when these grant applications come from, I keep bringing up the infrastructure bill that we don't know, it's going to be a year or two before that gets rolling, of the grant, competitive grants coming to the municipal level, the more you have engineered makes your application a lot better, and I'm sure he's well aware of that. So, it's just my bit of advice as a resident of the township for 52 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any other comments from the public? Dave, is there anything in the chat at all? So, the question for the solicitor at this point, then, is to ask how to proceed with a motion that would focus on the second phase only, which would be from Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard.
I think you just made the motion, although I would suggest that we go back to the motion to table that was mentioned earlier, because we could table Phase 1 until a later discussion and analysis.
Okay. So, we need a motion to table the Phase 1 section of this motion?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second that, specifically that.
Motion and a second on the floor to table the Phase 1, Waremill Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard section of this motion. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, our second motion will be to proceed with the Jordan Creek Greenway Design and Engineering Services for Phase 2, which would be from Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard. So, I have a motion to proceed with that.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And at this point, so could we, Randy, put under old business for our next meeting to get an update on the Phase 1 portion of this motion so that the board is kept up to date on the progress of that?
Not a problem.
Thank you. Moving on to Motion C, we have a motion to award bid with regard to the flood mitigation study in Covered Bridge Park. Mike Kukic, that would be you again.
Last one.
Last but not least.
So, again, this has been discussed at length. I won't go through the entire memo here. We received kind of an odd response to this RFP. We've had multiple discussions about it. We've had workshops about it, and we are to play off the last conversation. We're at the 12th hour with this one. We really need to make a decision and contact ECD and let them know if we'll be returning the grant fund or if we are going to request an extension and move forward with the flood mitigation study for the section of Covered Bridge Park.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this particular item?
We had extensive discussion at the workshop. I don't have any more comments beyond the workshop. There was no real conclusion reached. There was no real consensus reached among everyone present, meaning the board and staff. On the other hand, I did listen very carefully to what individual people said, Randy, yourself, Mike, Herb, and David. I formed an opinion based on what you said individually, despite the fact there was no real consensus in the room. Based on that conclusion, I'm amenable to proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolk. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Hodges?
Thank you, President Kelly. At the previous workshop, I believe it was on February 9th, we heard from our engineer. He gave his input. We heard from Herb, our Public Works Manager. We learned that there were three reputable engineering firms who said this was not attainable, and we had three official responses saying they, and correct me if I'm wrong, they could try, but they couldn't promise anything. So, I feel like going forward with this is paying money to put a Band-Aid on something that isn't the larger problem. I would much rather see a study done on a regional level and just use common sense. Let's maybe move some of our apparatus back away from the water, get it out of the flood zone, protect our park benches, protect our pavilions, do whatever we can, and look at it on a regional level, because we're not going to be able to do anything on a small-scale level. This is coming 70 miles north. So, that's just how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodges.
May I make one more comment? This is the one comment that stuck with me at the workshop, and I think it was Herb. I think it was Herb who said, "We don't know what we don't know, and there's value in doing this study to get more information so that we can make an informed decision at some time in the future." That was sort of my takeaway of what I heard at the workshop, and that statement is a key reason why I said I would be amenable to proceed. Who wants to take credit for that statement?
I believe it may have been, I believe it may have been Dave.
Come on, somebody has to do it. I stood up for whoever said it, right?
I believe it may have been Dave.
It was David, okay.
President Kelly?
Of course, Commissioner.
We did have extensive conversation back and forth, information exchanged, and this is a tough decision. Like Commissioner Hodges said, this is not a problem that we're going to be able to solve in its entirety. It just isn't of that magnitude, for South Whitehall, anyway. But where I land on this particular one, because of the price tag, is I will support it because I think part of this information that we will get with having spent this money that is combined with a grant, the larger part of the expense of this is grant money, is that we may learn something from this study that we can employ in the short term that gets us away from, let's say, a 10-year flood and take us to a 15-year flood or some increment that will save this park incrementally for not a whole lot of money. That's where I fall on this. It's not a problem that I'm even thinking that we can solve. We're not going to solve it. But I know that there are issues there that I would like to have confirmed by a consultant, the Gabian Baskets, for instance, well-intended at the time, but they're part of the problem that we see down there. But what else, from a trained eye with experience, will we learn from this? And that's all I'm trying to do, is maybe one or two rainfalls in a year, we will be able to prevent those rainfalls resulting in the creek overflowing the banks. That's why I'm, I will support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne. Any other comments from the board?
I will, I agree with...
I will, I agree with with Brad and Mike. I believe it was Dave who did say, we don't know what we don't know. And I just do have a question for Commissioner Osborne. Are you looking at the quote of 32-4 or the or the 74-6 in the action requested? The quote from Gilmore? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so let's, that's a good question. Let's talk about that.
Chime in there and clarify that. So the quote of 32-4 was for the shorter section of creek around the S-turn.
Yes.
At the request of the board, I was also asked to get a bid alternate for the entire length of Cover Bridge Park, which would be the second estimate there. In learning everything that we've learned even since we submitted this grant, it's my personal opinion that if we move forward with this, I would recommend we stick to the smaller section because my thoughts actually go back to what Commissioner Hodges said is that to solve this problem, we're going to have to look at a bigger scale. So if we start with the smaller section and we do get some recommendations out of it that can potentially help in the short term and/or that may point to a larger study or regional study being done, I think that will be the best bang for our buck with with the $30,000 grant and us max budget of $4,500 to to get this study done.
That's a good question. Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, as clarifying.
Maybe Brian could come up with a name for us also. So we can look at it on a grander scale.
I had a comment. So we did have a lengthy workshop on this and it was a, you know, it's, as everyone has said, it's a difficult thing to decide which path to take. A comment that our engineer had made was that, if I can find, I thought I wrote it, that the flooding is only going to get worse as more development occurs upstream of South Whitehall Township. And we know that growth and development is just happening over and over again outside of our boundaries. And a suggestion was made at the workshop that this is something that should be worked on and looked at in more of a regional way, potentially in conjunction with the LVPC to help to get a much larger study scope. I am concerned that three of the bids that we received stated that they would not respond because the scope was likely not to be attainable. And I, I don't know what good it will do to study 1,700 feet when we have an awful lot of area there that is impacted by our flooding. So that is my comment on this. If there are no more comments from the board, are there any comments or questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to proceed with the, to award the bid with regard to the flood mitigation study in Cover Bridge Park?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion does not carry. Three to two. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to motion D, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of radios for Greenwald's Fire Rescue Department. And Chris Kuskaravich, if you would please advise us on this motion?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. This is for a request for us to proceed with the purchase of radios for the Greenwald's Fire Department. This is to replace some old outdated portable radios that are not able to communicate with our mutual aid departments that we run outside of Lehigh County and in the city of Allentown. The new portable radios that Greenwald has picked as their their radios will give them a direct communication with Fire Ground Command and other working units on the scene of of working fires that they're at or on other scenes with mutual aid, increasing our ability to have greater safety and accountability of firefighters within those jurisdictions.
Excellent, thank you.
I am requesting the purchase of the 16 Harris Portable XL 400P radios for the cost of $142,387.32. This was a budgeted item and the budget was at $143,000.
Very good, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this particular motion?
I have a comment. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
You are now eclipsing Andrew Garger, who I'd like to acknowledge all of your work, but not just your work, all of the effort you put into your work, including the communication required in order to get this across the goal line, to use the cliche. This, this was a topic of discussion. It seemed like, you know, a lot of debate over whether we should do it or not, whether it should be in a budget or not. You were, you persevered in order to get this done and all with with public safety in mind. So as a commissioner, I can't thank you enough, and I think we should all recognize your efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolk. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? No, I will chime in.
Add one more commentary on this, just real quick. As going forward, there's been a lot of discussion with Lehigh County and what the county radio operations are going to do. This will actually put these radios, our tri-band radios for Greenwald's, this will put them on the same level as our our police are, that going forward, regardless of the system they put in place, these portables will be able to make that transition and continue to be functional, although they're not, they're not inexpensive radios. They will continue to move forward with with whatever happens within the county.
Excellent, that's important information. Thank you. My only comment was to Mayor, Commissioner Wolk, this was a debated topic in our budget workshop last fall. So again, I do concur and thank you to Chief Garger for persevering and for presenting a very detailed presentation to us tonight of your need for this capital request. It was very concerning to me in the fall, the debate we had centered around conversation about our volunteer firefighters not being able to communicate when in the city of Allentown. And the day after our conversation, there was a fire in Allentown, and I called Chris Kuskaravich and I said, how did, how did it work? Were our firefighters able to communicate? And he said, no, they weren't. This is a no-brainer for me as a commissioner. Our police, fire, EMS, our employees in general should have the equipment that they need to be safe. So I heartily would endorse this, and thank you for helping Chief Garger to bring this to us tonight.
Absolutely.
If there are no more comments or questions from the board, anything from the public? I do need a motion then to proceed with the request for permission to proceed with the purchase of radios for Greenwald's Fire Rescue Department.
I'd definitely make a motion.
A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Andrew's ready to fall off his chair.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carries. Thank you both. Thank you for your service. We appreciate your commitment to the township.
Please stay safe.
Okay, on to motion E. We have a motion requesting permission to award the bid with regard to the road milling project. And Herb Bender, would you please assist us with this motion this evening?
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. South Whitehall Township Public Works Department is respectfully requesting permission to award the 2022 road milling bid to Rotomill Incorporated for $173,888.32. Rotomill Inc. has done the milling in the township for the last three years. The areas that are going to get milled are Clifford Park area, Grandview Terrace area, Winchester Heights area. And this is a budgeted in the 2022 budget, the whole complete project from milling to the tacking, to the paving, to the ceiling, we have $1 million for. The number of 173,000 was right on pace with what we had figured. So we are, and I have touched base with the Blacktop plant because we do have an escalation clause in there due to, we all know, fuel going up and everything. So Blacktop has gone up over a dollar a ton on us already. We are still fine with the $1 million right now, so I'd like to award this, get them in here as soon as possible so we can get this material down right away before we could possibly see another price increase in that escalation.
Very good. Herb, thank you for that presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the board on the road milling bid? Hearing and seeing none, any from the public? Okay, do I hear a motion to proceed with permission to award the bid with regard to the road milling project?
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion F, we have a motion requesting permission to grant a request for an accessible parking space. And Herb Bender, I believe that is you.
Correct.
Thank you.
I was out at the property at 2020 West Columbia Street. She had called in requesting two handicap parking spots. I did go out, observe, I did sit down and talk with them, get to know them a little bit. They both had some extensive surgeries done to them. She showed me the back of her house. And it will be a lot easier for them to access their property through the front than the rear. So that is their, their main issue is trying to be able to access the property. I did speak to Chief Dorni to see if he had any concerns with it. He did not have any concerns with it also. Public Works is in favor of allowing these two handicap spots to these residents. I did go into detail with the residents, just because it's a handicap spot, someone else with a handicap placard still can park there. It's just not their space, and they do understand that.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that because there was a note on the bottom of their request asking if it could be tag-specific, so they understand that it.
Correct, yes, they do understand.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Herb, you had made a comment about they had some surgeries, both of them. Is this for any specific length of time until they're back on their feet, so to speak? Or is this going to be a permanent handicap spot?
This is, they're both going to be permanent. They were back surgeries and other other things.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah.
Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you. I have a question similar to Commissioner Kennedy's. The, the placement of these particular spots, do they expire, let's say, if this home is sold?
Yes, what happens is when they move out and a new resident moves in, they do know they do have to notify the township. We go out and we do take the signs back down. And the other thing they do have to do is notify us if they do have, like expires the last day of 9/26. So they will have to update their placard cards with the township also.
Okay. Just in case they forget to.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Herb, that was my question. One of the permits expires in 2025, one in 2026, so it, the responsibility is on them to contact the township, or is there a way that we keep up with these, or how does that work?
No, we do, it is the residents' responsibility to come in to us.
Once they're renewed?
Yes, yes, yep. And they just bring us a photocopy of it again, and we put it in the file.
Excellent, very good. If there are no other questions or comments from the board, are there any comments or questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I hear a motion to proceed with permission to grant requests for accessible parking space?
Motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to agenda item D, which is correspondence and information. Randy, would you please review for us the current vacancies on boards and commissions?
Sure, no problem. We have one alternate vacancy on the Civil Service Commission, two vacancies on the Landscape Shade Tree Commission, one vacancy for the Parks and Recreation Board, one vacancy for the Planning Commission, an alternate vacancy for the Zoning Hearing Board, and one vacancy for the Vacancy Board. Did you want to discuss the the process or?
I will, yes, thank you, Randy. So we are still, we're getting to the end of accepting our application period. If there's anyone who would still like to apply to serve on one of our boards or commissions, please go to our website and fill out a form to send into the township. We are going to interview for these positions on Wednesday, March 30th, beginning at 6:00 PM. That will be a public meeting. And in the meantime, I believe Tracy will be in touch with those who have submitted forms of interest to get them scheduled. Thank you for those who have already expressed interest. And Randy, if you would please help with the upcoming meetings.
No problem. On Thursday, March 17th, Planning Commission will meet at 7:30 PM. Monday, March 21st will be the next Green Advisory Council meeting at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, March 23rd, we'll have a zoning hearing board at 7:00 PM. Monday, March 28th will be our next Landscape and Shade Tree Commission meeting at 10:00 AM. And Tuesday, March 29th, will be a Planning Commission special meeting at 7:30 PM. Monday, April 4th, will be the Public Safety Commission at 7:00 PM. And we are also doing a workshop meeting on Wednesday, April 13th, for the Board of Commissioners to discuss land preservation.
And that'll be at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, sorry.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to correspondence item B, we have our Planning Commission Annual Report for 2021, and we have our Planning Commission Chairman Bill McNair with us tonight. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. The annual report for the Planning Commission is a requirement of the Municipal Planning Code to do each year, and we have set out to do it. The Planning Commission has a great group of members. Brian Height, as you know, is Vice Chairman. Alan Top is the Secretary. Diane Searns, yeoman's work for our township and is greatly appreciated on both the Planning Commission and here. Mark Luth is our newest member. He replaced Matthew Mullqueen. And David Wilson is the other one, and of course, the player to be named later as as we get through the the plans for this. So also Greg Adams is a key person in all this, putting together all the plans, as well as Jennifer Oliver is our solicitor and Tony doing the most of the engineering that we have. And working out very well, we have this past year, and I will ask you to the, well, the roles and responsibilities of land development, subdivisions, zoning, map amendments, rezoning, SALDO amendments. The key one in my mind is the planning, the comprehensive plan. I think that's the key document for the development process in the township and one that we need to concentrate on, and we are spending a lot of time, as you all know, doing that this year. And, you know, there's a lot of interest in the township to revise the one from 2009. So I think we are working diligently on that. There's also official maps and conditional use requests. Going on, we had 11 major plans, two minor plans, two zoning ordinance amendments, and one conditional use doing this. The Planning Commission met virtually for the first half of the year, and we are now back meeting live. The goals for 2021, and by the way, I have to read, my house is being painted and my computer's disconnected and I've lost all the stuff that I needed, so I'm glad it's up here on the screen. The completing and adopt the comprehensive plan is in progress, so we are still working on that. To complete and audit and adopt the new official map, that will be part of the, when we get the plan done. Start the zoning ordinance review, we have not done that. Update the sidewalk inventory, which has been completed, and continue the community outreach, which is is in progress and will continue that way. And the goals are pretty much matched for 2022, to complete the comprehensive plan, and we have made significant progress on that. We are now meeting monthly, a second meeting on the comprehensive plan to prioritize getting that information there so we can get that. The key job, as I said, for the Planning Commission is to develop the comprehensive plan for the commissioners to approve. And then from that, we will again do the, basically the same things, the start the official map update, start the zoning ordinance update, and continue to update the sidewalk inventory and make it available, and the educational outreach for the community. The remainder of the report goes through a month-by-month scorecard of the cases heard or the things that we did during the the monthly meetings. This does not include the Planning Commission meetings that we have additionally on the comprehensive plan. So you can see that this was done, this is again, the requirement of the MPC, and we've, this is what we did to complete this requirement. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Bill, for your report. The one comment I'd like to make, I believe it was Greg who actually put this together, but I appreciate the the detailed information that you've listed by month, by plan, by the action taken, the SALDO waivers recommended, deferrals. There's a lot of information here that's very helpful, both to the public and to the board, so I appreciate Bill and and Greg putting that together for us. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? you. Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Well, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We'll see you next year. Okay, moving on, we have direction and discussion. Are there any members of the board who had anything to bring before the board this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to old business. Where's Dam? Randy, do you have any update on Where's Dam?
No official update this evening. Still fine-tuning the proposal for the construction administration part of this. I hope to have this back in front of the board for April 6 for formal action.
Very good. Thank you. And our second item under old business is the comprehensive plan update. David, do you have any update for us this evening?
So the comprehensive plan update, we had our, we tried to have our workshop meeting. We had some technical difficulties. The microphones weren't working due to an upgrade to go-to meeting that happened apparently that day. So what we're doing to not lose any time with the project and not having to coordinate schedules and reschedule a meeting is we're going to have the Planning Commission do their prioritization exercise now, and then we'll come to the next meeting with the synthesized goals and objectives, and then also a first draft of the synthesized resource protection, goals and objectives, and implementation actions. And we'll have an opportunity to kind of evaluate the two methods, whether we think Planning Commission do it on their own or get the comment before we do it. So it'll give us an opportunity to pick whichever way works best moving forward. So we're kind of taking this as an opportunity to experiment a little bit and see what works best.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate you diverting a little bit. I know we had to cancel because of technical difficulties, but I appreciate that you're working with the Planning Commission to get ahead, and we'll get back on track in April. So thank you. And moving on, we have courtesy of the floor, which is time for a public comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board this evening? Anyone in the chat? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, we have a motion before us tonight to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Do I hear a motion to proceed with this?
I'm...
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to proceed with authorizing payment of invoices and disbursements. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 14 is executive session. We have no session planned for this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, please.
Is there a second? Very good. Motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you. Good night.